Good afternoon and welcome to the December 17th, 2008 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order at this time. First item on today's agenda is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December 3rd, 2008. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, I'll declare them approved as submitted. The next portion of the agenda pertains to Platts and Plans. We have four items under Platts and Plans today, the first of which is the company stores, Lot 12, Section 5, final plat for four lots on 2.75 acres, zone Commercial Highway along River Rock Boulevard. Nova Management Incorporated is the developer. Ms. Logan, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission. The first item before you today is a final plat for four commercial lots located along River Rock Boulevard that back up to Interstate 24. If you'll recall, we reviewed a preliminary plat for this at last month's Planning Commission meeting, or the last meeting, and this is just a continuation of that process. Of course, the construction plans will have to be approved before the final plat can be signed and recorded. Today, before you, you only have one copy that you'll have to share to look at. The design team did not submit enough copies and told staff they would have them here before the meeting and failed to do so. So you have one copy to review, which Chairman Lamb has in front of you. Otherwise, other than the fact that they need to add a note about the future development must comply with the city stormwater ordinance requirements, the plat is in good order.
Well, since Mr. Huddleston only provided us with one copy, I guess a lot of people are cutting back these days, and Huddleston has to cut back as well.
We let him do them smaller now. Try to save money and paper.
We'll be getting crayons next. Thank you, Mr. Huddleston.
We've already reduced the number of meetings.
That's right. The Planning Commission has passed around our one plat that we have. Any corrections or questions pertaining to this plan? Anything at all?
Chairman, I have one question from Mr. Huddleston that he may or may not know the answer to. This particular tenant, can you tell me what it is that they do, what they're going to be utilizing this facility for? I was just, I realize that's not within parameters of our approval, but I was curious.
I think they're planning, I have seen auction signs on the property, but no date for the auction listed, so I think they're planning to auction it and sell the lots individually.
Okay.
Right, it's for marketing, and what they may end up doing is combining two lots, and they may sum as platted, or they may come back and replat them into fewer number lots.
Okay.
Yes, and...
There's just uncertainty. They're trying to liquidate properties, from what I understand.
There is a note on the plat and a comment made at the preliminary plat, and that the note is bolded on the final plat, that these lots will have to comply with the city requirements, because they are somewhat small lots. They meet the minimum size requirement for a commercial lot, but they are small lots, and we will expect them to meet all of our commercial standards, including parking and landscaping, with each site plan. And so, you know, they are aware of the fact that the lots may have limitations based on the sizes of the lots that they're creating.
Okay.
And they're zone Commercial Highway, so there's a lot of use.
Yes, there's plenty, I mean, there's a lot of, I mean, that's the most open zone that we have, in terms of commercial uses. So, in terms of uses available for the, for builders and developers out there, there are many in the CH zone.
Okay. Just main thing, we don't want them, after they buy them, come in to us and say, "Well, our lot's small, would you cut back on the required landscaping, and do we have to have all that parking, and do we have to make those setbacks?" We want to help people at this point to know that that's going to be expected, and if they can find a use that fits, welcome to it. We'll review the plan on its merits.
Okay. There's no other comments or questions, we're ready for a motion.
Move for approval, subject to staff comment.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next item is Florence Point Commercial Lot 1, site plan for 5,340 square feet on .87 acres, zone PUD, located along Florence Road. Roger Patel is the developer. Ms. Logan?
Yes, sir, thank you. This commercial lot is the first lot seen for development in this five-lot commercial subdivision, which is part of the Florence Point PUD, which was approved several years ago, and is part of the whole Florence Point development that's taking place out there. The lot has been subdivided into five lots under a preliminary plat, and this is the first lot proposed for the development. The planning director confirmed that the, this was a permitted use outlined in the PUD when it was originally approved. This property was set aside for commercial as part of the original approved planned unit development. The applicants before you today have submitted a plan that staff has reviewed on several times, because we want to ensure that the plan is meeting the requirements of the PUD. Before you today is the architecture that's proposed. They're proposing a pitched roof gasoline canopy with e-fish trim around the top and brick columns, similar to some of the gasoline canopies we've seen in other locations, such as the Manson Pipe Market and the Thornton's. And the building is shown to be a combination of brick and e-fish, which were approved materials that were outlined in the PUD. They're showing a blue metal roof, and staff would like to work with the applicant on their color selections, and would like that to be a condition of approval today if you do so choose to approve this. In terms of the design, the original design did not include this much brick, and so they've come through now, as you can see, and tried to break up the e-fish on all four sides with brick around the bottom and through brick columns, and they'll also be adding row locks in those bricks, try to provide some interest. In terms of the actual site itself, the applicant has met the majority of staff comments and has been working with our city engineer on meeting the stormwater quality ordinance requirements. And the environmental engineer did review this plan before the meeting and indicated that, that they had shown a workable solution for stormwater quality. And that's a big deal on this site, because gas stations are considered to be kind of a hotspot when it comes to that. I would state that the urban environmental department has not had an opportunity to review the final landscape plan, there were some landscape comments, and that any approvals today be subject to their final review and approval of the landscape plan.
Okay. Ms. Ely?
Just wanted to say, Ms. Logan, I appreciate the fact that you and the developer have been able to work out some of the issues that, in the past couple of years, that we have urged developers when it pertains to gasoline canopies and that sort of thing, before it gets to us at this point, to be able to see it in a way that, that I think is what we've been trying to go to, and, and in a style that I think even Mr. Lamb would like.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Good point, Ms. Ely. Any other comments? There are none, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion for approval, subject to staff comments, and specifically the color scheme request and the landscape plan, both of which to work with staff on those.
Motion is made, and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. The next item under Platts and Plans, Florence Point Commercial Lot 2, site plan for 6,400 square feet on 1.38 acres, zone PUD, located along Florence Road. And once again, Roger Patel is the developer. Ms. Logan?
Yes, sir, thank you. This is the second lot proposed for development in this five-lot commercial subdivision. We just reviewed the site plan for Lot 1, and this is Lot 2. It's a larger lot and sits at the back of this portion of the commercial property, which again was set aside as commercial property in the planned unit development for the Florence Point Development PUD. This is a proposal for a small retail strip center that will be built on that property. They have shown a site plan that complies with our requirements in terms of parking, et cetera, but we want to make sure that it's noted in the record that because of the limited parking on this site, that there will not be any restaurants that can go in this, in this strip center. And they, they have stated that on the plan, so they are aware, and that's because of the parking limitations. Again, we've worked with the developers' architect on the, on the design of the buildings, because this is going to back up to residential property. And we, originally, they did not have any screening for the HVACs, which are going to be roof-mounted. Now they have come back with a screen, and the HVACs will sit underneath the parapet. So there won't be, we don't want the people that are going to be living, that backed up to this, to see those HVAC units. And so they are now shown to be screened. The building is a combination of brick and e-fish. They have provided brick accents along the rears of the, on the sides, along with a brick row lock, and they've even done so along the rear, to kind of break up the monotony of an all e-fish rear. We wanted to try to give a little bit of interest back there. In addition, we are requiring a tight D buffer between this property and the residential. They have shown what appears to be a D, but they haven't continued it all the way across the rear property line. They stop a little bit short, and that D buffer is expected to go along the entire rear property line. It should be a condition of approval today if it is so noted. We would say that the environmental engineer has looked at this, again, from a stormwater quality, and he feels comfortable with the solutions that they're proposing, and that any conditions today be, just conditioned again on final approval from the urban environmental department of the landscape plan, and making sure that that tight D buffer conforms with our ordinance requirements, and that it continues all the way to the rear, across the entire property line. And also that, you know, that we have, that we can work with the developer on the final color selections for their building.
It looks like they're trying to keep the landscape strip out of the 20-foot drainage easement that's...
They are, and they have had to actually, you know, that, that drainage easement has always been, has kind of almost been a little bit of a benefit to the fact that we're getting a little bit larger buffer area in the back there. And of course, you know, Mr. Ailott stated before, one of the best buffers between properties is distance. So that has allowed it. But I think they could still go off, they, even though there's that easement, that's just a setback line that continues around that one corner, and I think they could continue that screening, you know, over to that one corner. There's just a small area, right, there's a small area that is left un-screened, and I think they could continue that on around to provide, you know, a better buffer to the neighbors.
Well, I was, that was my question, not, do you want it going straight across the easement, or just curved right there and staying, staying up there next to the asphalt?
I think, I think you're correct that a curved, a curve around would be...
Not to the property line, but, but to visually form an impediment.
I think you're correct, that that's probably the best way to handle that.
Any other comments? There's no other comments or questions, we're ready for a motion.
Chairman, move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next item is ABBA, Property 1, Property Lot 1, Phase 2, site plan for 6,000 square feet on .55 acres, zone Commercial Highway, located along Memorial. Edwin McKnight is the developer. Ms. Logan?
Yes, sir, thank you. This property is for a second building located on the McKnight property, which is ABBA property, which is located directly on Memorial Boulevard, along the eastern side of Memorial Boulevard, across from Love Court, directly south of Uptown Square. So this will connect back into Uptown Square. There's an existing building there, and he is proposing to build a second office building, very similar in design, and I'll show you the architecture in just a minute, and wants to just build another office building on the property. One thing that staff would know is that they are showing their bump outs for their parking lot into the planting yard, and that is not permitted. They will need to revise their plan to eliminate the bump out, and that way, they may end up losing a couple of parking spaces to do so, but they are showing that they are overpart as it is, so they have the two spaces that they can lose. The city environmental engineer has reviewed the plan for stormwater quality, and is in agreement with the plan that they proposed for their stormwater quality on their plan. They have been working with the city horticulturist and the city urban environmental department on their landscaping plan, but they have not seen this final plan. And so we would ask that any approvals today be subject to their final review and approval. They have shown some foundation plannings around the building, and, but we want those to be reviewed by our urban environmental department, to be, to look at and see if they'll provide the appropriate screening, that they've shown that it will. In terms of the site itself, they do have an access easement that runs back into Uptown Square, and that's shown on the plans. And there had been talk a long time ago about a possible connection with O'Reilly's, the adjoining neighbor, but that has never been, that was never really a formal proposal and was never on the books, and they haven't been able to work out anything of that nature. So there won't be a connection shown at this time. I'll show you the architecture, if you have any other questions where available. I know that the, the owner and developer is wanting to do a horizontal property regime for this plat, for this property, and he's planning on submitting that tomorrow, and that will be something that staff will have to review and have our legal department review, and then we'll work with him on that. But that's the type of ownership he wants to use on this property, is to be able to sell it as often as we can. The building is proposed to be an all-brick building. It'll be two stories with front entrance columns and a very traditional Georgian design, and there will also be corner accents.
6,000-square-foot building?
Yes, sir.
It seems like parking is somewhat restricted, the amount of parking available.
Yes, they, they've shown, I think, 34 or 36 spaces, and the, strict office, if it's just general office, is, they would be required to have 20 spaces on site at 1,400. So they may end up losing two spaces over in the front to allow for that bump out. And we'll have to review, if they want to use some type of different office, Mr. Lamb, like medical office later on, that, we'll have to review it at that time to see if they can meet their parking requirements. When they come in for building permit, they will have to meet parking requirements, or they'll not be able to put that use. Again, you're right, it is restricted based on parking.
Ms. Jones?
Does this building architecture match the building that's already existing on the site?
It's very similar.
And Ms. Holloway was satisfied with the landscape?
Originally, no. But they have, but they have been, their, their design team has been working with Brad Barbie in the urban environmental department, and they've been emailing PDFs back and forth trying to get there, and they've been working on it. And this, this plan that's before you today has reflected what they've changed up to this point. But they, the urban environmental department hasn't had an opportunity to review this final plan, and so we would want to make sure that, you know, that this is in agreement with what they, what they've discussed previously in their conversations.
Any questions?
Chairman Lamb, if there are no other questions, I move for approval, subject to all staff comment, as well as final approval by urban environmental.
Sir?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. That concludes the Platts and Plans portion of our agenda. We have one mandatory referral today, that is the land use and deed restrictions for city-owned property concerning the old city landfill. City of Murfreesboro's applicant, Mr. Sam Huddleston, is up to make that presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. Members of the Planning Commission do have one mandatory referral item for you today. I've asked Ms. Jaco to distribute an exhibit showing the location of the old city landfill, so you got that clear in your mind, the property we're talking about. We closed that landfill under a commissioner's order in 2004. There's some paperwork issues we're still working on to, to satisfy the balance of the requirements on that site, and the balance of the requirements and the commissioner's orders. And those do involve land use restrictions. Since it is a city-owned property, we, we have to bring that before you as a mandatory referral item to get your approval, similar to dedicating easements or right-of-way or those sorts of things on those city-owned properties. And we've been working, Mr. David Ives and I have been working with TDEC staff to draft the final language of the land use restrictions, and we have that almost in final form, we think. We've made one last proposal to them, and that should be finalized by the end of the day tomorrow. Basically, the land use restrictions involve limiting what we can do on the old landfill, limiting land disturbance activities on the old landfill, and then they also limit groundwater use in the area to this property, specifically on the old landfill. And those are not onerous restrictions on us, because we've, for this property that's shown in the exhibit, we have used that for, for disposal of solid waste, and certainly any use of an involved building, those things would, would take extraordinary engineering efforts. But, so we propose those land use restrictions to TDEC, and we think we're in final form on that. We ask your approval of those. And then one other issue that we'll ask your approval of is, we propose to enter into a contract with TDEC in lieu of providing a performance bond to secure the items, the maintenance items and caretaking items that we have to provide on that site for the next 30 years or so. And we ask your approval of staff's recommendation on, on this particular site.
Right now, the greenway's been extended across this property, has it not?
That's correct.
Looks around it and around the lake?
That's correct. And we, we did receive TDEC's approval of, of that use, and so the, the use of the, of the greenway trail across the top of the landfill is a use they're comfortable with, and, and they have, have approved that during some previous plans and middles.
Thank you, Ms. Huddleston. There's no other questions, we're ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is two staff reports, the first of which is a request to move a house from 409 South Manny Avenue to 531 East Sevier Street. Randy Fan is applicant. Ms. Ely, good afternoon.
Thank you, good afternoon Chairman Lamb and Planning Commission members. What you have before you is a request which you probably are unfamiliar with. I think this is the first time that you've had something like this come before you. Public Chapter 246 of 2007 has some guidelines when, when a property owner is wanting to physically move a house into city limits. In this situation, it requires Planning Commission approval. If the neighborhood association, they're, they're working on getting one established in this area, but it currently doesn't meet the guidelines and requirements. If they had been a legitimate association for at least one year, then this would be going before them, but since they're, they haven't been in existence for a year, this is coming before you. Public Chapter 246 of 2007 does require that before a house is moved to a lot, that it comes before you. So Mr. Randy Fan, who's here in the audience tonight, he's to my left, owns a house at 409 South Manny Avenue, and if you're looking at the map, it's the little red house on the left side, the lower-left side. He wants to move that house about three blocks to 531 East Sevier Street, and you can see that on the map as well. It's the, it's the house on the right side. The four items that Planning Commission should consider before approving a request like this, according to state law, is that first, the age of the house that's going to be moved must be within 10 years of the average age of the existing structures within the developed area. And since this essentially is the same neighborhood, and this neighborhood was developed at the same time, and he's not really moving it from one part of the city to another, I think that that requirement is met. The second is that the value of the house to be removed, after all the improvements have been made, must meet or exceed the average appraisal of the existing structures within the developed area. Mr. Fan has submitted some information to me from the Rutherford County tax, tax property assessor, and currently the house doesn't, it's not the same value as the surrounding houses, but he has made some commitments to make, to improve the house, to bring it up to current building code, and to increase the value, which will put the, the value of the house above that of the average houses. What he's committed to do, and this must be, take place within one year, or he would be in violation of our building codes, is he's committed to replacing the roof on the house, drywall, and painting the interior of the house, rewiring the entire electricity in the house, replon the entire house. He's replacing the wall heat and window units with the HVAC unit, and he's carpeting the entire house. So he has a time limit, which is one year to complete all these, and after he does, our building codes department will be actively involved in issuing permits and inspecting this to make sure that it is up to our code that we've adopted today, and then the value will exceed that of the average. So I think that that will be a condition that can be met. The third is that the size of the house to be moved must not be less than 100 square feet of the average size of the existing structures, and this house meets and exceeds the average size of structures. And the last is the appearance of the house to be moved must be consistent with that of those existing residents as determined by the Planning Commission. I provided in your staff comments some photographs. I think it's fairly clear that the house's appearance is consistent with the neighborhood, in my opinion. Of course, your opinion matters more, so if you wanted to discuss that further, then we could look at that. I did want to make sure you, you knew that where this house is, where he's wanting to move it, or where several Habitat for Humanity houses are, and I've been in contact with Ms. Smith with Habitat for Humanity, and she is concerned, because she wants, she's invested a lot in our communities, invested a lot in this area. We're trying to improve it. And I shared with her the information that I had, and after sharing with her what I, the information, and Mr. Fan's intent, she was more comfortable, and I don't see her in the audience today. She, at first, wanted an opportunity to speak, but after seeing all of the evidence, then she's fine with this, because we have invested a lot as a community into this area. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Mr. Fan's here as a witness, and if you have any questions for him, he'll be glad to answer them for you. Most of the work to be done to the house, he's planning on doing himself. He does have some licenses, and he's physically moving the house, you may have questions about that. But the final decision is yours. If you do recommend approval, I would just ask that you condition your approval upon the improvements to the home being completed within that one-year timeframe. The state law says that, but it just, I think, would make it even more clear to him that after one year of issuing the permit to move the house, he has that timeframe, just to get all the improvements finished. And the inside of the house doesn't look very nice, and I've gave you some photographs of that, but he's, he's got some plans, I think he's got the ability to improve it. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Mr. Fan, do you have anything you'd like to say?
It depends on what you all have to comment on.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Fan or for Ms. Ely?
I, I just have a comment. It's part of the BZA, we didn't see necessarily, or talk about this, well, I guess we might have, this particular lot, but we did talk about the lots around it, so we were able to go and look at this property that, in question. I mean, the pictures serve it well, but the house is not in bad shape, and the front of it, as you can see in this picture, is definitely in keeping with the neighborhood, without any question. As a matter of fact, the look of it is as good or better as some of the houses even on the same street, so I don't think that's an issue at all.
Careful what you say, the news journal's here. Any other questions?
If there are none, Chairman Lamb, I recommend approval.
Second.
Motion is made, and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fan.
Thank you.
The second item under staff reports is to discuss the proposed draft of the revised Murfreesboro subdivision regulations and street design specifications. That discussion will be headed by Mr. Joseph Adalot. Mr. Adalot?
I will note that I'm going to have some very able assistants from our city engineer, Mr. Chris Griffith as well. First of all, I want to discuss a little bit about what we've done and where we're going. A couple of weeks ago, about a month ago, we had a session where we discussed the subdivision regulations, and we've continued to work on them, we've continued to address issues, and refine the drafting of that. So it's, it's working towards a point where I'm feeling more and more comfortable. I have shared this, I have sent the subdivision regulations part out to what I call stakeholders in the community, various developers, various engineers, various people who, because of the nature of their businesses, will be more actively involved with these. So that they have a chance to, to see what was going on, before I got to the Planning Commission, knowing full well that they would be able to participate in a public hearing on the backside of it, I felt that the Planning Commission would much rather that we go ahead and seek their input on the front end, and go ahead and address concerns. You did include with your agenda materials a letter from Mr. Bill Huddleston. He identified about three items that are significant, but what I'd call relatively small, that I think he is, still has concerns about. And I think that the, the letter actually speaks volumes. Mr. Huddleston is very thorough, he's also someone who does a lot of business with the city involving subdivisions, subdivision plats and development, and if he finds three things, instead of 90 things, I feel much better. And so I know that he's been looking at it. The, the second part of the discussion, and really where I want to go first, is the second part involving the street specifications. Mr. Chris Griffith, our city engineer, has been working on those. And what they're intended to be is a subset of the subdivision regulations. They're to be the more technical specifications that an engineer would use. Mr. Griffith's been working on these. His, his time has been monopolized by many of his projects that he's been trying to finish during the fall. As many of you all can expect, during the construction season, and as it wraps up for the year, he, his, and his job becomes very busy dealing with the, getting the roads squared away for the winter. So he's not had quite the time to spend on this that I've spent on the subdivision regulations. In any event, he's going to make to you a little short presentation and go over what's intended to be there. And then I'm going to return for some discussion about where we need to go, what we're going to do, and where I hope to be in a couple of weeks. Mr. Griffith?
Thank you, Mr. Adalot, Chairman Lamb, and members of the Planning Commission. As Mr. Adalot spoke, you've been provided a draft copy of the street specifications. You mentioned this is a companion document to the subdivision regulations, which you received a month or so ago.
a month or so ago. If you'll notice, this draft copy is dated December of 2008. The last street specifications that was completed by the city was 1974. We like to say that most of these guidelines are, are things that were actually current practices, things we're doing now, and we're just basically formalizing them into a, to a written document. Obviously, with the, those specifications being written some 30 some-odd years ago, we have addressed some technology issues, such as how the construction plans are actually created and, and submitted, and then some also different construction techniques that are used now that, while Mr. Adalot was probably a lot more familiar with, me at my young age wouldn't quite, didn't quite know those. The street specs broken down into four main sections. The first section's basically the standards, which, which saying that by what authority we're doing the work, and then also some outside documents that have been used to, to come up with these standards and, and developing them. The most, really the most interesting part of this section is the actual project plan standards. Actually kind of goes into the detail of what we expect to see in a set of, of project construction plans. And it'll help standardize that, help us during the review process, and, and help as, I guess, as a few, or more and more outside consulting agencies come in that maybe we don't deal with on a daily basis. The second section is the actual design standards. This deals more with the different types of streets and alleys, along with the cross-section information, street whiffs, right-of-way, sidewalks, some of the design criteria that's used when developing the construction plans, which of course, we're, we based on many other communities on the ASHTO standard. And then we've also have some, some information dividing the drainage systems up, and, and how we expect to, to see each, each type of drainage system addressed. The third section, probably the most boring section of the three, is the actual technical specifications. This is dealing strictly with material types and construction techniques used. It's really, as far as the material types, a lot of this stuff is going to be, will stay the same as our, our old specifications. But as alluded to, some of the actual construction methods used are, are changing with the improvement in technology. The fourth area, and probably the engineer's favorite area, is the standard drawings. Anything from recommended street layouts to drainage structure details, really just a quick reference for the local consultants and developers to use to be able to go and actually see what, really what we're talking about in words, and some of the, some of the, the standards that we're using. Like I said, these are favorite of, of engineers, not liking to read much, and more into pictures. These specifications also have been, have been forwarded to our local consultants and developers, already getting some very positive feedback on, on their review, which we're anxious to, to continue to get that, get that back. And we've also been working with the legal department. Went through the first round of, of review with the legal department. I suspect that we'll be, have many more with them also. But I did want to get this in front of you, it was starting to, I guess the, the news of it was starting to get out and getting widespread, and I wanted to give you guys an advanced copy to, to look at it prior to any public meetings. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have on it.
Any questions for Mr. Griffith?
What would be the process? I mean, we review, it goes to council, we recommend the council, and, you know, what's your timeframe on this in terms of implementation?
Okay, here's sort of where we're going. Some of this is going to be dependent upon our ability to, for Mr. Griffith to get through the legal department with his draft, and the ability to spend the time on, on that. The reality is those sort of things, in particular during holidays, take quite a bit of time, and, and holidays are very disruptive to any kind of project. But what we will require is ultimately, the Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing on the subdivision regulations and the street specifications, which are a subset of it. We can either have one public hearing with both of them at the same time, or have them at separate times. We, we can do that, either way. Ultimately, this will be for the Planning Commission to adopt them. Now, it's our practice in this community that we would also take them to the city council, so that the city council can, what I loosely call to ratify them in a way, we, we want the council to be on board, so that they know what, what the, the community is, is being asked to do. We did have a joint meeting once upon a time with the council on this. We've, we've had some discussion with them. In fact, the council did approve funding for us to hire a consultant to help us with this. And they're well aware of this project, and very supportive of it, I might add, that we need to modernize our regulations. Part of our effort is to be able to have clearer details, to be able to get them onto the internet ultimately, so that the, the people who design and do business with us will be able to use that as a tool. I think all of us are aware that the internet is playing an increasing role in our lives as we get information from, from the people we do business with. And we want to be in a position to be able, for the people who, who do business with us, to be able to do business in a way that is on the format that they, they expect to do it. So, we, we want to be able to get it on the internet. So, just to recap, we'll need to have a public hearing, we'll need to take action, we'll ask the city council to consider as well. Now, a little bit more specific on this. I want to tell you that the, the subdivision regulations part that we looked at a couple of weeks ago is, is, is almost to the point of, of ready to have a public hearing on it. There are some small loose ends. For instance, as I got my draft and Mr. Griffith's latest version, I saw a couple of things that I thought are duplicated in the subregs. And it may be that me and Mr. Griffith and our legal department needs to, to decide, well, which, which document should it go in. I saw a couple of things that probably ought to go into, to the subreg side, rather than in the street specifications. I saw a couple of things that were just district duplications, and it may need to be said twice, just as a matter of being helpful. Because there will be some people who, who put this aside and say, I don't need this part, I need this part. And it may be a good idea for some things to be duplicated, just so that they don't miss something that is of, of extra importance. I also want to tell you that in, in the upcoming months, there are probably some areas that we'll want to come back to after these are adopted, and, and go back and flesh in a little bit. For instance, the street lighting, how we do that. I think that's an area where we, we, as a staff, we struggle with the issue of decorative street lighting. Do we want developers to be able to have decorative street lighting posts? Well, some developers really like that, and so do the people who live in their subdivisions. But can we afford as a community to let there to be any number of, of these type of light posts, different kinds? And when they're torn down, who's, who's going to build them back? The developer chose to have a very unique, but very ornamental lighting fixture, and it gets run over, and they only make it in one province in Mexico, and nobody's been down there in 20 years to get one. So, you know, we, we, we don't want to be vulnerable with that sort of thing. Also, there are a couple of issues that we may want to go back and, as we look at our, and I'm, and I'm actually doing this, y'all may not realize this, but I'm looking at how to implement some of our design guidelines. Some of our design guidelines really, really better reside in subdivision regulations. So, once this tree is there, this will be a lamp that we can hang some of the design specifications into. And particularly, Section 5 of this, of this subdivision regulations. If you go back and look at, at Section 5, it deals with issues about requirements for improvements in design. And there'll be some areas we may look at, add in some additional chapters. But I think right now, our objective is to get our existing regulations up to standard, so that we will have a good platform for the people who do business with us, and for our own staff, who, who, who are charged with interpreting and implementing. Then, as we want to amend it, we'll have a proper tree and a proper place to go with it. So, it's, it's not confusing on, on how we got there. I hope you can appreciate that, that sort of dilemma I've had with the, the design guidelines. Some of them are zoning, some of them are subdivision regulations, some of them are wishful thinking. But those that are subdivision regulations, I will have created a, a future home form in Chapter 5 of this document.
Okay. We need to set a public hearing?
First of all, Ms. Mur, do you think the street specifications are ready for a public hearing? Or do you think that we could go ahead with the public hearing with the expectation that we'll make some amendments or modifications before that? The subdivision regulations, I'm satisfied are ready for a public hearing, if you want to have it in January.
And when?
I recommend that we hold off until the next month on the street specs.
Go ahead with the public hearing on the subregs?
Wouldn't it be better to have them both the same night?
Well, actually, here's one of the things that I thought about that, and I wanted to advise you, and let you all make up your mind on that. I think that the subdivision regulations has a broader community interest, and probably is certainly something we'd want to have at a night meeting. But the street specifications, it goes back to a much narrower group of people. It's more the engineers and the developers who probably would make this something that they'd be more interested in coming out during the day. Now, both of them can be nights, both of them can be day. But I've seen a very distinct breakdown about how that may apply. But if we wanted to, to put off the street specs for a day meeting, I think that the, the industry would probably be just as happy with that.
But I would also note that there's, there is a lot of material here. And if there is significant public input and comment, we could end up with a very, very long meeting if we tried to do both of them at the, at the same meeting. So, we might be better served to split them up.
I hope we do have a lot of comment, but historically, we get very poor attendance at these kind of things.
I understand. And, but if, if we do get good attendance and good discussion added, it could make for a very long meeting if we do both of them.
The only concern I have is, is Mr. Adalot has mentioned, there may be some duplication as to topics covered. I realize there's going to be a minimal overlap, given the breadth of what these two documents are supposed to do. But if we do hold them separately, I want to make sure that that's not going to, to cause a problem, and making sure the parts of each one of them that should mirror each other, that that actually occurs.
We should perhaps wait till after both public hearings are completed before adopting either.
Well, that was also something I was going to suggest that you do. You take action on both of them at one time. But if you broke down the public hearings, you could do that.
That's a good point. Mr. Gilli?
So then, are we ready to set a public hearing on the subdivision regulations for the night meeting in January? Is that what, Mr. Adalot, you and legal are?
Yes, sir. And, and that would be January 7th?
Maybe we set a public hearing for January 7th regarding the subdivision regulations.
Motion is made. Is there a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Mr. Adalot, do you have anything else?
Yes. It's getting very close to the end of the year, and I would like to advise you that if you have not gotten your education credits, and I suspect all of you have, but if you haven't, please contact Mr. Lewis. He will make arrangements for you to watch some of our very exciting planning films. It'd be almost as if you are in a room full of planners for four hours. So, if you haven't had your requisite training, please, please get it before the end of the year.
Better still, would you ask Mr. Lewis to call any of the Planning Commission members that have not finished their training and notify them accordingly?
I would do that.
Because I presume everybody up here thinks that they have finished it.
Okay.
We've spent so much time with you, we certainly feel like we've dealt with some.
Pretty sure that you have. I lose track. I know some of them, for instance, Mr. Young has well exceeded his required training.
Dish and trips do not count.
Well, you may be a little deficient there. We may have to, we may have to have another trip there, Mr. Young. But, no, actually, he's, I think he's the education leader this year. He's done real good with his credits.
Does he have a carryover?
No, they don't. They end promptly at 12 o'clock midnight, December 31st.
Mr. Young, he had attendance awards back in grammar school, too.
He just has a thirst for knowledge, an incredible thirst for knowledge.
Well, we'll, we'll contest. We'll, we'll review our records and check the list twice and see who's got their credits.
One, one other comment regarding cost-cutting measures, and I don't know how much of that would be a factor, but the publications, like, is that a part of us, the American Planning Association and all of that? That, if that could be, would that be a savings to your department?
Mr. Clark, it's possible that we could save some money there in the short term, but in the long term, I would much rather you guys be members of the American Plan Association, or, and get the literature, and get the magazines, and get the professional opportunities that come through that. The value of that to the community far outweighs the cost to my budget. And so does attending the, the conferences and et cetera.
Okay. Anybody has any cost-cutting recommendations or something, be sure to get with Mr. Adalot. I'm sure he'll be glad to adopt that.
I'll forward it to Mr. Haley and Mr. Lyons, they're always interested.
Mr. Adalot, anything else? If there's no further business, we stand adjourned.